...clock, and I respect everyone's time here. So we're going to get started. Please remember to speak up. And a couple of things for my board members. If you're going to speak, if you're not speaking, please keep it on red. If you are speaking, please turn it to white, but then turn it off when you're finished because they're getting a lot of reverberation on their video in the back. So welcome to the January 19, 2023 meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It's called to order. I'm Nancy Hefford, the Chair of the Board, and I'm now going to call a roll call of my fellow board members. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Avery.
Aye.
Ms. Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Mr. Fotis. Ms. German. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinle. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren. Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you, and please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Benzley, are there any changes to the tentative agenda?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the January 12, 2023 email, you all received a draft minutes of the January 5 meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to go over the draft minutes? If so, are there any corrections? If not, may entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated.
Motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Oh, there he is. I didn't see you hiding in the crowd. I was scanning the room. I know you're one of our peeps. We're honored to have the County Executive Johnny Ocheski here to join us today to introduce to the Board the Capital Improvement Program process. He will describe the fiscal perimeters, highlighting the points of particular interest to the Board and outlining his priorities for the FY 2024-2029 capital budget and program. Let us now welcome the County Executive.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members. It's good to be back in person and doing this. I think this is the first and fourth or fifth time, but it's good to be with you again in person. I also just want to take a moment to thank you for your service here on the Planning Board. We really appreciate the time that you give to the residents of our great county, so thank you for your service as well. It's true, when we stood here four years ago, this county was facing a very different set of circumstances. We were confronted with an $81 million structural deficit. We were failing to provide adequate support for our retirees, and we were frankly in danger of meeting some of our county's most basic needs. But together, working with you and others, we have set forth a plan to bring a better Baltimore County to reality. We've ushered in a roadmap of open and accountable local government with high-quality services and data-driven governance. We are working to instill equity and sustainability into the culture of Baltimore County, and we sought to strengthen our schools and communities in every single zip code. Since the beginning, we've engaged thousands of residents in the budget process. We've launched our first open budget platform, which shows our county expenditures down to the check, and together we have delivered for the people of Baltimore County, closing that inherited deficit while also making record investments in education, public safety, and infrastructure. In the midst of all that work, we also battled the COVID-19 pandemic. We continue to take bold steps throughout that, delivering one of what has been recognized as one of the best responses to the worst public health crisis of our lives. In some ways, COVID has showed us what we are capable of and that we can actually achieve more than what we originally set out to do. Leveraging outside resources like CARES, FEMA, and now American Rescue funding, we are addressing not only the immediate pandemic needs of our residents, but also beginning to address the longstanding issues and inequities in our communities that were exacerbated by a result of the pandemic. As we continue to move forward, we do so with a strategy for allocating our resources equitably. Our plan includes the creation of an affordable housing fund, new equity districts, a community development organization on Liberty Road, and a comprehensive recovery initiative for Essex. We are aiming to go beyond stabilizing communities in need. We are trying to lift all of them up so that our residents have the opportunities to thrive. In the Fiscal '23 Budget, we continued our progress forward, including record funding for education for the fourth year in a row, a year-over-year increase of $91 million more in BCPS's general fund, and $96 million in capital spending. We've continued to implement our long-term capital plans to improve every school across Baltimore County over the next 15 years. This includes additional investments such as $49 million for a new Scotts Branch Elementary School, $15.2 million for a new Red House Run Elementary School, $13.5 for a new Dundalk, addition to Dundalk High School, and $17 million for new security measures, including festivals and cameras. We've also provided historic levels of funding for rec and parks to support community projects in open space, including an incredible $45.5 million in capital funding this year alone. The investment there is helping to support a number of major projects like $6.1 million for the Expanded Park Acquisition Program, $7.3 million for a steam center in Randalstown, an additional $3 million towards this Ferris Point Park, and $2.2 million for our Local Park Comprehensive Enhancement Enhancement Program. All the while, we've continued to listen and respond to the needs of our communities, with $15 million dedicated in capital investments for the Baltimore County Library System, including $13 million for a massive renovation of the Woodlawn Branch, and providing $15 million more to the Fire Department for planning and design of a new Catonsville Fire Station, underground storage tanks, and other critical departmental needs. Earlier this year, we joined Speaker Adrian Jones, Baltimore County's own, to announce our investment in Security Square Mall, $20 million of combined state and local funding, showing our commitment to seeing that site once again become a vibrant site for our communities. That's an investment that will jumpstart revitalization of this critical economic and community anchor. Here in the county seat of Towson, we finally delivered on the long-promised vision for the Towson Loop, Baltimore County's first free, locally-operated circulator, better connecting our Towson residents to where they live, work, study, and play. We just celebrated the program's first year, and despite it too being launched during the pandemic, we are celebrating over 66,000 rides to date. Meanwhile, we continue to make investment in sustainability, a key pillar of our work, including funds in the Fiscal Year '23 Budget for the creation of a new urban reforestation and forest maintenance division within EPS, as well as a green infrastructure group in the Department of Public Works and Transportation. On the capital side, we provided over $625,000 for the installation of 1,000 street trees, $250,000 for the expanded maintenance and inspection of county forest conservation easements, and $600,000 to improve our electric vehicle infrastructure, with the county anticipating having our first six electric vehicles put in service early this year. Very proud of the work that we've done to date with all of you and looking forward to the work ahead. We obviously will begin the fourth year of our signature Budget Town Hall series, which have been so valuable in hearing from our communities and ensuring that residents are driving the conversations. In addition, we will begin our capital budget process following voter approval of general obligation bonds. In November, our residents approved $338.9 million. On the ballot included is $200 million for school construction, $57.3 million for public works infrastructure, $27 million for governmental buildings and related activities, and $25 million towards waterway improvements and land preservation activities. I know the department's only working in more detail with the Board to outline those spending priorities with you in the year ahead as part of our budget process. Just a word on education. Again, we've provided the record funding, but really proud that we're going to continue moving forward. Every child deserves a modern, safe, clean, supportive learning environment. To that end, we are continuing on our long-term, multi-year improvement plan for all schools. It is the foundation for our work. Over $3 billion of investment developed in consultation with community and education partners two years ago. We are finally eliminating the needs for makeshift spaces, and we'll have the end of trailers by the time the plan is fully implemented, and we'll raise the bar by funding efforts like expanded pre-K, school safety, and modernization of our oldest high schools. And thanks to our sustained local investment and strong straight state partnership, we are well on our way to achieving the goals of that plan. I know that you have a robust schedule of capital budget hearings with our department heads and leadership from BCPS and CCBC, but very much look forward to your recommendations from the Fiscal '24 Capital Budget and our Fiscal Year '25 to '29 CIP. Again, I want to thank all the members of the Board for volunteering your time and energy. Your work is invaluable as we chart the future of Baltimore County. Just again, thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this afternoon. We truly appreciate your commitment to Baltimore County. Madam Chair, thank you in particular for leading the Board, but looking forward to all the ways in which we're going to continue to move Baltimore County forward in the years ahead. Happy to take my leave, or if there's a question or two as well.
Stay right there. He and my board, so if you do, be sure to unmute yourself, but then mute yourself afterwards.
Oh, thank you. I would like to thank the County Executive for his attention to some of the sometimes neglected role under the county. The Department of Economic Development has forwarded a recommendation for a Department of Agriculture. And when you wonder about agriculture, there's 75,000 acres at least permanently preserved for agriculture, plus another 25 perhaps that are environmentally concerned for over 100,000 acres are devoted to agriculture, the food, development of food for the county, and environmental concerns, and the production of clean water. So we hope that this moves to fruition, and the county will recognize the agricultural department as a needed part of the county. Second thing, the last seven years, the people in the Northern County, Hareford High School is the center, is one of the leading counties in the state, I mean, leading high schools in the county and state for after-school participation. They are near the top in number of athletic accomplishments, team championships, individual championships, and yet we still have the same indoor facilities that we had maybe 40 years ago. This because of the number of people we have involved in this. It is necessary for additional space, and we have space next to our gym. And like I say, the last seven years, the Planning Board has recommended this, but the people in the county have ignored this need. One fellow said, "Well, you've got air conditioning a couple of years ago. That supposed to suffice, but it didn't work with me." But anyway, we again thank you for your support of the things that we need in Northern County. And we hope that some of these things can be received further attention, and thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Dennis, for your leadership and advocacy on behalf of Ag in North County. I know we'll be taking a very serious look at the recommendation as we do the operating budget side for want to absolutely do more for our Ag communities. And I think in addition to that, I know that as part of the capital process, one of the things that we're looking at is the creation of a North County Center. That's obviously something that we've announced and are working on. You know, as the Board continues its work to see if there's an opportunity to examine space there, whether it's for gym space, community space, in addition to the needs over at Hareford, to see if that can be an additional support to the community. So we're looking at that as well. And very proud of the ways in which we've grown. Every year, our referenda on preservation dollars here, I know Department of Planning probably talked through that, but we're very proud to continue our investment to place even more land in preservation here in Baltimore County.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? When you yourself.
District 4, and I just wanted to thank the county for investing and finally addressing the inequities on Liberty Road. Liberty Road is a neglected resource for the county, and we're anxious to see that steam center become a reality for the younger people in that community. Thank you.
Other board members?
In working with recreation teams, we have had to go to Carroll County, York County, Harford County in order to find space to participate and to practice. And I think this is not like 30, 20 miles over to Bel Air and back and forth. So there's both recreation needs and school needs for these facility, indoor facilities up there.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your service. Thank you. Appreciate your service again.
Next on our agenda is the introduction of the proposal for the annual revision of the basic service map. This is Jeanette Plazo, and the staff of the Department of Public Works and Transportation are here this evening to present the basic service maps to the Board. Welcome. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, Board, for hearing this presentation. And I got to tell you, moments like this makes me really proud to be a Baltimore County employee and resident after hearing Executive Ocheski's delivery. So I just want to start with that. And my name is Jeanette Plazo, and I am an engineer in the sewer design section in DPWNT. I'm here to introduce the 2023 draft basic service maps for the public water and sewer systems, as well as transportation. I'm joined by my fellow engineers and colleagues, David Baer and in the sewer design section, Chris Neebury in the traffic engineering, and of course, our Bureau Chief Lisa Caltz. The basic service maps are part of the countywide master plan standards and guidelines relative to new development. These maps are updated annually per the county's zoning regulations and include areas that are deficient in public water and sewer and transportation. To recap on last year's basic sewer maps, on April 4, 2022, Bill 25-22 was signed and enacted by the Baltimore County Council, adopting the revised maps for 2022. For this year's basic service maps, there are no deficiencies in the public water system as defined by our zoning regulations. There are no changes to the delineated 2023 sewer deficient areas and areas of concern. In other words, the areas approved on the 2022 basic service maps for sewer are the same areas presented to you today. There are 13 deficient areas shown on the 2023 basic service maps for transportation. This is the same number of deficient areas as last year. However, one intersection improved from a level of Service F to a level of Service D. As you may recall, deficient areas are defined for each basic services as follows. A deficiency in the water system is defined by a failing fire flow test that measures the residual water pressure at the nearest public fire hydrant. A deficiency in the public sewer system is determined by a lack of capacity to convey existing sewage flows. And deficiency in the transportation system is determined by a lack of capacity to provide a standard level of service within arterial and arterial collector intersections. Level of service designations of D, E, and F are considered to be deficient. We would like to request a formally request a public hearing for the 2023 basic service maps. During this hearing, we will present a more detailed information on specific deficient areas and areas of concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Plazo. Does any of my board members have any questions? If not, can I entertain a motion?
It moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board set a public hearing as specified under BCZR Section 4A02.3.8.1 for Thursday, February 2, 2023, at 4:30 PM for the Board to receive comments and concern from the citizens of Baltimore County on the 2023 basic services map.
Thank you. May I have a second? As a reminder, this hearing will be in person on February 2. Ms. Benzley will now fill us in on the reports from the January 12, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At their January 12, 2023 meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue five certificates of appropriateness for the following properties. The Prender property located at 207 Morris Avenue in Lutherville; the Markowsitz property located at 118 Osborne Avenue in Old Catonsville; the Seast property located at 1605 Front Avenue in Lutherville; the Vanderbeek property located at 5116 South Rolling Road in Relay; and Style Mark Properties LLC property located at 11646 Philadelphia Road in Perry Hall. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Benzley. Now you will fill us in on legislation recently passed since our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 4222 Baltimore County Water Supply and Sewage Plan, a resolution to amend the Baltimore County Water Supply and Sewage Plan. The approved recommendation will be submitted to the Maryland Department of the Environment, and that concludes the report.
Stop that.
Welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board hearing for the update on the Comprehensive Manual of the Development Policies. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafer, the Chair of the Planning Board, and I'll now start with a roll call of my fellow board members. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Avery.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Mr. Fotis. Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlow.
Aye.
Mr. Warren. Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
At the January 5, 2023 meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board, Mrs. Jen Nugent of the Department of Planning introduced updates to the Comprehensive Manual of the Development Policies. Section 3, Commercial Development with an Urban Rule Demarcation Line. Tonight, Mrs. Nugent is here to further present and update the board. Following Ms. Nugent's, I don't know if you have to do another presentation, but just wait to see if there's any questions. You all have an opportunity to speak. Ms. Nugent.
Happy to do the presentation again unless you all would just like me to entertain some questions you all had.
Do you all need the presentation again? No, thank you, Mrs. Nugent. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Nugent?
I guess I do. So we received a letter from a constituent today. When is the appropriate time to discuss those comments? Would that be in the hearing next time or now?
Now.
Okay. I guess the letter is asking for more specifics. Why aren't we doing this when, you know, why are we recommending electric car charging stations when it's not even a specific recommendation of the zoning ordinance? When, you know, a lot of questions like that. Why are we making recommendations when there's no specifics that back it up in some of the other areas? So my question is, is this manual is not meant to be very specific, right? It's just about general policies.
Guidelines, design guidelines.
Guidelines, right.
So the questions that were posed in that letter, we're asking those questions. And when we set out at the beginning of updating this manual, we don't want it to be a point-in-time publication. We'd like it to be continually evolving, continually looking to the future, trying to incorporate some best practices and, you know, best solutions for development going forward.
Yeah.
So the provision of encouraging auxiliary uses or provisions like electric vehicle charging stations, solar powered energy, those are some of the concepts that we are trying to bring forth and promote.
I'm going to re-yield to you, Kathy.
Mr. Heckman, are you good now? Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Wolfson?
Thank you. So, and to the point in the letter as well, you know, he addressed the, like, service stations that are behind buildings and backing up the residential. And I can think of a specific one on Liberty Road, west of Offutt Road, that's backed up directly to houses. You know, I question whether the guideline should be that the proprietor of the business should sufficiently landscape the frontage and locate the tanks there instead of penalizing the people in essentially their backyard with that. And also, he addressed lighting. And, you know, there is just so much light today that that's, I feel strongly that that's something that needs to be addressed more as far as downlighting. He mentioned the 18-foot height of the light. I mean, there's just floods of light around. I understand that lighting is a safety issue, but lighting the sky is not a safety issue. So, I mean, the design guidelines, I feel, should be, as far as lighting is concerned, should be more directed to the pedestrian and the street user rather than flood the entire area. But there were many good suggestions in that letter, and you'll be addressing some of those issues?
Certainly. Again, you know, these are intended as guidelines, and we use these guidelines on a case-by-case basis with every development. And so having provisions in there to help us guide that development, to protect the communities. As you point out, lighting is a safety issue. There are standards and practices in the lighting arena that the county does utilize to protect surrounding residential development, using lighting that has cut off so it doesn't spill light into the adjacent. And so those things are looked at by the regulatory agencies.
Mr. Perlow.
I guess just my general comment would be. My general comment would be, and I've discussed it numerous times from this pulpit, but our major commercial highways, some of our areas are 80, 90 years old. Those gas stations might have been built in those days where our regulations were different. Residential housing came right up to it. Now, if you're rebuilding gas stations with the stations that are out there, the companies that are out there, I think they are going through our process, and that's why we really need to focus going forward for the next 20, 30 years in redevelopment, not looking back, you know, at the past. You can't change that. You're not going to be able to make certain people redo their stations or their landscaping or whatever it might be. But going forward with redevelopment, absolutely the lighting can be done. It can even be turned off if they're not 24-hour, you know, stations at night or something. But I really think that that's where we really need to have our focus is on redevelopment and looking to redevelopment so many projects. I mean, it's hotels as well. It's, you know, old catering halls. And I know a lot of VFWs have closed, and they're being reevaluated to what they can be used for. Even when we get back to zoning cycles, we had major discussions, I know, about building apartments behind some of the shopping centers on our major highways. This is where people do want to live. And again, that's why we do have a planning staff that hopefully gives us good guidance. So I hope that we really do look forward, not so much always back, because it's hard to change the past, but it's easy to change the future.
Thank you, Mr. Perlow. Other board members that haven't had an opportunity to speak, do you have any questions? Then our members that have already had an opportunity to speak, if you want to speak.
Just saying, I agree with some of the early comments.